He's got quite a few members.
Good evening, welcome to Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020 Selectments Meeting. Is all of the Selectmen are here, is four of them are here via Zoom. We have the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, the Town Planner, and the Town Human Resource Director is around the corner and she'll be joining us later. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
Slight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is here.
My nation under God.
Indivisible, indivisible, justiciable.
And justice for all.
Boy, that wasn't synchronized.
There we go.
Zoom delays.
Yep, a little delay there. We have the approval of the September 8th minutes.
I'm moved that we accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second them.
We have a motion and a second, if no further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
Uh, Mark, I think you were absent.
Oh yeah, sorry, he was absent on that one.
No, I wasn't absent last meeting, was I?
Yes, you were.
It was the last meeting?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, alright, so four and one abstention. Is, uh, is, that brings us to our first public comment, we have nobody here, did anybody chime in, Patty wanting to come in?
Uh, no, but can I get a second on the minutes first?
I'll second.
Oh, oh, cause Mark seconded it, okay.
Ken.
Thank you.
Ken did it. Do we need to go through the roll again?
No, I don't set.
Okay. Um, is, uh...
Uh, no, I didn't receive any emails, Tom.
Okay. Um, so that brings us to our public hearing. We have the general assistance maximums adoption, then we have one, two, three, four, dealing with marijuana, and one proposed changes to the land use ordinance. We'll go through the general assistance maximum first.
Okay, um, I'll address that. Every, every year, uh, the Department of DHHS puts out a, uh, sometimes changes, sometimes no changes on the amounts and, uh, that are allowed for general assistance, uh, benefits if needed. Um, I'll just give you a quick overview, the overall maximum, uh, was an increase of about 2%. Food maximum went up 5%. Uh, the housing maximum went, uh, increased by 2%. Otherwise, uh, there was no changes to utilities or heating fuels, uh, or personal care and household supplies. Uh, the mileage reimbursement was .45 cents per mile. And then the funeral maximum, there was no change, so, um, you just have to adopt those numbers that you have. And that should be all set.
Any questions of Steve?
We never really maxed out on the usage of those, of the general assistance rights.
No, we, we always budget around 10,000, we have in the last four years, 10,000. And if, I don't even think we spend 2,000 of that, it's very, uh, very low usage. So that's a good thing for the economy that people aren't using it. But I don't know if that's gonna be the case this winter. So, but it's there if it's needed.
Any other questions of the Town Manager? If not, I'll, uh, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the GA proposals as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is yes, thank you. So, on the next ones is, is, no, James can pipe in here anytime, but, is I believe these are all, the marijuana ones are all, uh, licenses that have gone through the regular planning board process, they've met all our requirements and everything.
For, for conditional use approval.
So, is, all we're looking to do here is to, you know, give them the official blessing, correct? Similar to what we did last meeting?
Right.
Is, um, now, is, um, James had suggested that we combine all of these as one public hearing rather than do each one separately? And then we can vote on each one separately, is there a problem with that?
I don't see a problem with that, unless you have issues with one of them, but you're gonna talk, you should bring it up if anybody has any comments.
Yeah.
How many different places do we have, Tom?
Um, well, we have one, two, three, four, four us tonight, three medical mari-
They're all separate.
Right, right, there are three medical marijuana's and one-
Adult use.
Adult use cultivation and storefront is, uh, so...
Yeah, I can, I can go through.
Yeah, it is, we'll have James address that way, don't we?
Yeah, just, just a reminder, um, for everyone and anyone listening, the whole purpose of licensing is to ensure that, not only is there compliance, but there's timely remedies to compliance. Um, so these public hearing notices are posted in the paper and notices are sent to abutters, direct abutters. So for this first round, uh, this license is a, is a really good introduction for the cultivators, uh, for the, the business owners, and, and to meet the, the Select Board. So we have four licensees here tonight, and that's- What?
Turn your sound off, cause you're speaking into the microphone, I think.
Technical difficulties, how do I sound? So we have four license, licensees tonight representing six total licenses. The first two on the agenda are for 398 School Street. Uh, there are five buildings at 398 School Street, and there's up to, as I understand, three tenants in each, up, up to three in each building. So I, we have here tonight for 398 School Street, White Ash and Jen Griffith, which I believe is Williams Greenery. So if White Ash, if you wanna kick it off and introduce yourself to the Board and what you're all about and... Think you gotta unmute yourself.
Yep, you're on mute.
How you doing, is this better?
That's better, yep.
How you doing, uh, my name is Greg, um, I'm with White Ash Cultivation, it's, um, just a medical marijuana cultivation facility, and, um, just kind of been, the beginning of this year, kind of been just getting things rolling, and, um, that's pretty much it.
Is, uh, any questions from the Board for Greg?
Where, where on School Street is it?
At 398 School Street.
Yeah, I know that, what's the landmark near 398?
That's up by the schools, schools, right?
Um, there's an elementary school a little bit down the street.
Right, in between the elementary school and North Borough Cottrell.
Yeah.
Yes.
A way down there.
Well, right between STK, um, storage unit, and then there's another storage unit like right down the street on the other side, right in the middle of those streets.
Right.
Yeah, and so that's where you're moving?
That's where I am right now.
Springer's?
Yeah, Dave Springer's place.
Okay, yep.
Yes, 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 yes.
Any other questions for Greg from the Board? It, is, I, I, I have just a couple quest, quick questions, is, how, how long have you been in business, Greg?
Um, so I started building the place out in 2019, but didn't really start getting the plants and everything rolling until, uh, this year.
Yeah, and, um, and, uh, are you from the area here?
I am not originally from the area, um, I grew up in Massachusetts, but I have lived up here for about three years now.
Right, so, um, how many employees do you figure you'll be having?
Um, right now, I have one official employee with two more working on getting their, um, employment assistant card.
Alright. Any other questions for Greg?
Where are you from, Massachusetts?
I'm originally from Everett, Massachusetts.
Everett.
And you have, you live in Berwick now?
Um, right now, I'm staying in York, and on October 15th, I'm moving to Waterbury.
Okay.
What, what made you decide to come to Berwick, why, why Berwick as opposed to anywhere else?
Um, so truthfully, I, in 2014, I had a diagnosis of cancer and wasn't able to go back to my regular job, and while I was sick, I, um, decided, you know, growing my own medicine, and then from that, um, I just kind of looked into finding a good opportunity up there so that I could, you know, still have a job and not be somebody with a disability for the rest of my life. And this was, uh, I, I was introduced to Dave and just kind of got the ball going.
Is there anything that, that stood out that made Berwick your, your choice location as opposed to any others?
Um, at first, it was easy to get the location, um, considering, I, you know, like I said, I was just coming off getting sick, so to actually try and buy a house and do all that on my own would have been very difficult. So, it was kind of the best situation for me, and also I like that it's standing south of Maine, and it's close to kind of, you know, New Hampshire, and still close to my family that's back in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we could go over to the next one?
Yep, so the next one, I can't- Believe me, it's way, it's way easier to change that.
Uh-oh. We go-
Not gonna work, okay.
We got technical difficulties, please stand by. Yeah, still, still trying to figure out these hybrid meetings and, uh, you know, what we need for hardware here.
So yeah, so, uh, Jen?
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm well, thank you, and yourself?
Not bad, is, um, is, uh, if you could, just, you know, explain to us, uh, a little bit about yourself and what you're doing, and, uh, give us your background if you would.
Um, I... I'm a caretaker for Williams Greenery, um, I... Yeah, I work at 398 School Street, um, I have one employee, um, what we're about is just making sure we have good medical plants and be able to provide for other people in other ways. Um, I have a medical background, so I definitely believe in supporting medical needs.
Now, where's all this Berwick wanna go, does this have to stay in the state of Maine?
Yes, it has to stay in the state of Maine.
Well, when you reach the point of, um, it's too much? You know what I mean, when, when you, there's a lot of things going on, not grow, but in the state, where do you, is there, is there a point where you have too much pot? Or then you put it out in the black market, does it go somewhere else, no?
Oh no, we're, we're limited on what can be grown and how it's distributed.
Oh, so then it went to state, okay, I have it.
Yes. There are state regulations that have to be followed to what can be produced in, in its quantity.
Right.
Right.
And with the tracking and everything, is, uh, they, they track it right from the beginning, right through the end product, so, you know, the state has a pretty good idea about everything passes through their hands, so...
Yeah, right, so if that's anything else, the state takes care of it for us, Mike was screwed, Tom was screwed.
Right. Um, any questions for Jen from the rest of the Board?
Same, same question, I'll probably ask the same question for all of you, I'm just curious is, what the draw to Berwick is for, for, it seems to have, it seemed to have a large number of people interested in Berwick as their location for production, uh, distribution, and sales, I'm just kind of curious what, what's driving that, that, that interest in people who are focused on this particular industry?
Um, quite frankly, it was in a good area, um, I like the security features, I like the fact that it was, had to be behind a gate, so keeping the general public out was a good big feature. Um, it's close to home, um, and it's close to the store that we sell the products for medical use.
Where is that, where is that store?
That is at... Tubo Street.
Bochum's?
No, right in, uh, South Berwick, or is it Berwick, Berwick?
You're right, Berwick?
Yes.
Uh, you live in Berwick?
Do I live in Berwick? No, I do not, I live in Matt-
Where, where you from?
Kennybuck. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Arundel.
So...
I'm newer to the area, so, it seems to think my old home, but no, I live in Arundel.
Is, uh, you know, it, it, both Greg and Jen have said is, um, you know, they're actually, uh, leased, subleasing space from, uh, the Springer's-
Springer's.
Place up there, right?
Yes.
So is, uh, no, he has the facilities, you know, to, uh, to do that, so that's probably why they came here, I would imagine. So, is, uh, any other questions of Jen? If not?
So we got Bill who's on the same screen, sharing the same screen, and, uh, he's cultivating at One Blackmore Road, so I think it's a pretty, um, similar to what's going on in, um, Springer's Place. One Blackmore Road was permitted as agriculture, kind of similar to Raymond Place. So, we can go into the cultivation part on, on One Blackmore Road if you guys would like to do that, and then, um, Bill also is the owner of, uh, Tubo Street, the storefront.
Is, uh, go ahead, Bill, you know, you've seen everybody else, give us some, your background.
Yeah, I've seen you guys a few times too.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, I, I went off and dented rope a lot, and I, at One Blackmore Road, and I grow my marijuana there for the medical reasons. And, uh, and the product goes from there to Tubo Street, though, I wanted to keep everything, if I'm working in the town, I wanted to try to keep everything in your town.
There water over there on that One Blackmore Road?
Yep, there's water.
What's that, going to the tracks or is there a well there?
It's a well, I believe, I'd tease it.
There's a well, if you cross the tracks and you take a left.
Yep, you cross the track, it's right there on the left.
Yep, okay.
Dennis's workshop when he was in the carpentry. Yeah, it's all gated in and... It's quite a little bit.
Have a residential area, James.
Yeah, that was one of-
You got, you got houses right there.
That was one of those that was permitted as agriculture before we even zoned it. It's tucked away, it's tucked away, it's right, it's right next to the railroad track.
I know just where it is, I know, I take care of the road.
Right.
It's just where it is.
So, is Bill, is, uh, is between your two facilities, is how many employees do you have?
One.
Just you and then one other, yeah?
Yeah, we got the store.
Yeah.
I have two, sometimes three.
Okay.
And then, oh, I get a federal ID number now, so I can put everybody on, uh, cause I get incorporated.
Right.
Every, on payroll.
So...
I tell you, I'm not happy about this, I hate to be an asshole, but, um, I, I don't know how you got it on One Blackmore, that's all residential area. People live everywhere there, it's a big apartment complex going right across the street from you, on the other side of the tracks, it just seems to me that, I don't care, I don't know how the town ended up doing this. It's just, um, wrong.
Well, it, it, is James, James said earlier, is, um, that was, um, listed as an agricultural area.
All right, so Tom, I got 200 acres of agriculture, so I can just not put up buildings and rent them?
Is, uh, J-
Yeah, what happened is the state of, I believe the state changed their marijuana laws, which kind of opened up this door for marijuana cultivation to be done, and at the time, um, it was permitted as an agricultural building. And that's how both Raymond Place and this place on Blackmore Road was, uh, was permitted.
Yeah, before-
Raymond Place is one thing, it's out really close to your land, Blackmore Road has people there, we live there, it's a neighborhood. I, I don't get it, guys, I'm telling you right now, I don't get it, so, whatever, not right.
Is, uh, yeah, I know, those, those, those facilities were brought in before Berwick had a chance to really, you know, start, you know, getting our, our fingers into it and getting it to where we wanted it to be. You know, unfortunately, we were, we weren't prepared for it when the state changed, so...
Yeah.
Is, uh, any other questions for Bill? If not, we'll go to the next one.
Sure, that's, uh, Ken, Ken Crowley of Herbal Pathways, he's out on Portland Street.
Is, uh, your turn, Ken.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
Good, good. So I've been in the business over five years, um, the reason I liked Berwick was I live in Lebanon, Maine, Lebanon wasn't opt-in yet, I wanted something close by. I'm also the first approved in Gardner, Maine for retail there, and I also own a store in Lanesboro, Massachusetts. So I've been in business just over, going on six, six and a half years.
Is, um, any questions?
Well, that Plainfield store took that off, I saw it in the paper, they were standing up for hours in front of your store when you opened, right?
In Lanesboro, it's not open yet, that, that had to be somewhere else, Lanesboro, Mass, it's occupied New York border.
Oh, I thought you said Plainfield, I'm sorry.
No, no problem, I wish it was open.
Now, how do you, how do you, um, how do you justify coming to Berwick, how do you feel about it?
I liked the town, it was close to Lebanon, Maine where I'm at, uh, and I wanted to stay close to that location, I have, uh, four retail licenses in the state of Maine, and I was looking for places close. Uh, one is, the furthest one I have right now is in Gardner, and that was approved by Gardner City, the city of Gardner.
Yeah.
And then Berwick, right now.
So you, you, you can't take Bro Park, Maine and bring it to Massachusetts, can you?
No, sir.
So all has to stay in the state of Maine?
Correct. Correct. So the, the store in Massachusetts, I have to purchase from cultivators in Massachusetts, and then for adult use in Maine, I'll have to purchase from adult use cultivators in the state of Maine.
I just don't know how they're gonna keep track of all this, you know, there's gotta be somewhere they're pushing it to the black market, it's just, I can't believe we're gonna do all that, there's gonna be stuff going out the back door, I don't know, it's crazy.
I know that everything has to be seed to sale tracked, um, and RF tags and everything else, so, I, I don't see how that happens, it, if it does, I think they catch on to it, you know, from Washington State, Oregon, Colorado, I think you see very little of that happening.
Just check on 60 Minutes, 60 Minutes just had a, a big thing on Oregon where the illegal pot distributing was putting out of business the people that ran the jail plate. It just had, they just had a big 60 Minutes on it last month or two, so, so that's wrong, the west coast is wrong, it's flipped.
Yeah.
I just don't understand, it's easy to do, everyone tells me it's not, it's hard to do, it's not hard to do, you grow plants that aren't made, there's no state guy watching you, or anybody, it, it just goes out the back door.
No, I, I, it, it, there are plenty of, there's still plenty of illegal grows, you know, that aren't regulated, and that's where most of the black market ones come from. And, uh, I'm, I'm sure for every, every legal grow that we have, there probably two or three illegal grows going, so...
Yeah, sure.
Is, um, is, I, I, I have, I have, you know, especially, especially where the state of Maine has taken, you know, all these years to get to this point, is, they've really been looking at what's happening on all the other states, and if anything, I think we're probably more strict than a lot of the other states are, so...
It, to, to that point, Tom, are we, is our procedure or allowance, uh, for, uh, licenses here in Berwick easier than every other town? Is it, is it something like that, is, that is driving a large number of growers to come to Berwick, making it easier for everybody, or, I'm, I'm just curious?
On, on the adult use side, what happened is that it was us and Elliott were the only towns in your county to opt-in, that's what drove a bigger, the adult use interest. Lebanon's subsequently opted in, and there's a few others that are considering it on the second round, but...
So, so my other question maybe to, to the growers is, um, obviously, we're gonna reach a saturation point, and I'm curious as to, to what your thoughts are, uh, concerning competition, I mean, there's gotta be a point at some time that, you know, we've reached a point where, you know, I, I guess, the strong will weed out the weak, I suppose, I'm, I'm not sure, but, um, I think there, there has got to be a limit at some point, uh, for the number of, uh, businesses that we take in in Berwick. I, I think that, you know, we're trying to attract other industry as well, and, uh, that may be a detractor for some, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, this is not a, it's a business just like any other, and I understand that, but I, I think that some may see that as, as a reason not to come to Berwick. And I, I, I don't want us to reach that point, and I wanna offer opportunity, uh, capitalism just like anybody else, uh, but I think that there has to be, uh, some limit to, to what we're doing, and I don't want Berwick to be known as, you know, the pot capital Maine, and, and, I, I think we just need to think about that, that, that future, what the future of Berwick is going to be.
We're gonna figure it out, you're, you are 100% correct on, on what it is, and we have to make sure these places are neat, and they're safe, and they look good from the road, and then no danger to children or anybody, anybody else to, to do it, it's just, I don't know how we got one on Blackmore Road, you know, I don't, where's the cringe piracy here, James? Only place I thought we could do is on Route 9 or Route 4, never heard of Blackmore Road before for the last two years, now I hear Black, where else are there places we can grow besides that?
That's, I mean, that's, it's, it's, um, and we're, we've reached the number of, uh, conditional use permits, so we're done taking any, we're, we're gonna revisit the number in a, in a year, that was part of the land use ordinance amendment, but... Yeah, we're at, we're at the cap, I mean, we've, we've definitely put a cap to it at its ultimate apex of what, um, you know, I mean, I agree with the point of, you know, we don't, we don't wanna oversaturate with the industry, um, but I, we also stand to, I think, benefit for some economic activity if we can mitigate the risks and mitigate the nuisance concerns, and that's, that's why we have licensing, and you guys have the, the right to revoke the license at any time with, for the public hearing, so...
And if I can address the, the saturation point, you know, is, is like any other business, is, you know, is with drugstores, CVS puts up a, a drugstore, you know, within months, Rite Aid has one across the street, and then Walgreen has one down the block, and, and it's, it's just a matter of, you know, somebody sees the opportunity and moves in. Um, and as far as the number of businesses in Berwick is, you know, when Berwick as a town voted, you know, four years ago, it was, it was a pretty strong vote for allowing it, and since then, when we've seen what has happened, that's where we've been seeing the, the ordinance has been tightened up and changed, and I agree, you know, is, this is something that we need to look at, but, you know, what we have in place now is what we have in place now, and, you know...
What you guys do now, in the future, it's gonna, gonna, see what happens when you come for the license again, or anybody else in the future's gonna come, because if you're not running a good operation, you're not getting my vote.
Right.
Believe me, you're not gonna get it, so I just, it's gotta be clean, neat, everything like that. Just cause it's Berwick, I, I don't think we should have a half-assed thing, it's gotta look right.
You know, and I've-
I agree, um, I'm purchasing the property that I'm gonna be at, 468 Portland Street, um, you know, I'll be-
You're the one that's gonna buy the piece from Brownie?
Huh?
That's Steve Brown's property?
Um, Brent Austin. 468, it's Spin Analytical that owns it right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, so you bought Spin Analytical building, yep?
Yep, I heard that.
So...
And where are you from, sir?
Uh, Lebanon, Maine.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, that'll be nice, neat, it'll be clean, you'll ne, it, it, you'll be more than welcome to come over and look at it before we open or even darn.
Yeah, no problem.
Be very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can, I just addressed also the safety issue, you know, I've, I've talked to the, the, the chief about this, chief town, and, uh, and he said that, you know, so far, is they've had no problems with any facility in Berwick, is, they've all been good neighbors, is, you know, other than occasionally somebody's alarm goes off inadvertently, is, but, is, um, you know, they review, the police review every plan ahead of time, and give their ideas about what they think should be done, so, I, I think that, you know, we really have- So I think that, you know, we really have been keeping an eye on things and how things have been moving in Berwick, so. I don't have, I don't have a problem with what's going on as is right now. But like I said, like we all said, is it's getting to a point where we have to look at this in the future. But I think that's another discussion to have, other than during this hearing here, 'cause this is for the licensing. And, you know, as I said, they've already gone through all the process to get to this point. So they've met all their criteria, so. Any other questions from the board? If not, I'm gonna go down through each one individually, and we'll have a vote on the licensing. Is the first one is the medical marijuana production facility, White Ash at 398 School Street, Unit 4K. Do I have a motion? Yes, no, maybe?
Move to accept.
We have a motion, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this license? If not, I'll go through the roll, Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So then we have a medical marijuana production facility with Jen Griffith at 398 School Street, Unit C.
Move to accept.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Is any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So then we have a medical marijuana production facility and medical marijuana storefront with Williams Greenery at Two Bow Street and One Blackmore Road.
Move to accept.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And no further discussion, is, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so four to one patty. And then we have adult use marijuana cultivation facility, facility and adult use marijuana storefront Herbal Pathways at 468 Portland Street.
Move to accept. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes, yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
That brings us to the proposed changes for the land use ordinance for the January 2021 Town Referendum warrant. And James will get us through that one, too.
So these changes, they mostly deal with the downtown, there's a few others at the end of the document that are pretty minor in scope. We initially, so we spent about a year, the planning board envisioned Berwick to make amendments to the village overlay district. It went from a few pages to about 18 pages. And we attempted to do what's called a form-based code, which is highly prescriptive, meaning that initially, we made it a lot of mandates because we didn't know who we were dealing with. We didn't know who the developer was, and we felt like, we wanted to make sure that we had a lot of things in there to make sure that the vision was protected. Now that we know who we're dealing with, the type of people and the company that has a reputation, it would be advantageous to the town to allow them to have a little flexibility in some of these mandates. And I'll go over some examples, the substantive changes in the village overlay district. And they might seem, I mean, they're pretty subtle changes, like we mandated parallel parking on Main Street, which if you do that, you wanna have on-street parking for the Main Street. And having parallel parking narrows the street, which makes it easier to cross. But these guys, I mean, with Great Falls Construction and Sopago Techniques, they're going to know how to design where some angle parking can go. And with angle parking, you can fit more cars, which then means you have less of a need to do off-street parking in the development site, which of course means, if you have off-street parking, that means you have less room for buildings. Another very small is, we had a requirement in there to raise the crosswalks, make it more visible for folks. However, giving them the option to do that or not, if you're keeping it flat, say Great Falls Construction wants to close that street down, and we want to hold the farmer's market there, it might just be better to have it all flat. The biggest change by far is having language in there to accommodate a drive-through. Initially, we had farm language in there, we were concerned about chains and big box stores. We now know that will not really fit into the village design. This drive-through will accommodate an anchor tenant. And an anchor tenant is what pays the highest lease, which allows for those mom-and-pop shops to come into town. I mean, those are the biggest property taxpayers as well. So a drive-through will accommodate a bank and a coffee shop. And those are also, I mean, with COVID, to have a drive-through, it just makes a lot of sense. So, I mean, those are the, those are the big changes. It really helps to maximize the development potential downtown. And this is all leading up to a special town meeting in January. And Great Falls Construction will be to the planning board through to the winter, they're sharing their concept plan in December. So that'll be nice timing where getting that change in there will allow them to get approved through planning board, you know, late winter, early spring, and head towards construction in the summer.
So James, you and I discuss landscaping on some of this stuff, is that gonna be voted on too? So we have a plan that everything's gonna be done correctly and kept correctly, right?
We have a whole landscaping section in that village overlay district, and I'll share it with you. We got a mandate for, there's a tree every so many feet.
It's enforceable?
Yep, yep, and that's already, I've seen part of their site plan, and they have the street trees in there. Yeah, so, and another, another part of accommodating a drive-through is allowing some parking in front of buildings. And then if that happens, parking lots need to be screened by either buildings or landscaping. So I'll touch base with you on, it's a couple pages long.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for James?
I don't know if this is for James or Steve, but the special meeting or vote in January, what is driving that?
That is being driven.
We can't get this into the November timeframe?
Yeah.
Or hold off until June?
No, this, this is driving, being driven by the bond, the $1.2 million water department bond. I, we have initially thought we didn't have to go through the legislative process because it's, they are an enterprise fund, they're not, they don't use taxpayer money. But according to the lawyer, we, the town backs that up based on how we're structured. So we have to go to the legislative body, and timing is such that we have enough funding to get us through the preliminary work that the Wright Pierce is gonna do. And then once we get approval, and if we get approval in January, we can start drawing down that funding when we need it. If, depending upon what we decide we need to be able to do to either find a better water source or build a plant that will handle the removal of the manganese and other products that we are having trouble with. So we were gonna have it in November, but we pushed, had to push it off 'cause we just didn't have enough time with some of the changes that we were doing. So now we're in full swing with Wright Pierce. They're gonna be here this week to do some exploratory stuff. So it's, timing is good, so that's what's driving it, is that. Any other questions for James or Steve? I just want, I don't know, questions or comments, but I know that, you know, when we first started this whole process, you know, back many years ago, it seems like now, you know, that was one of the big things was, you know, drive-throughs. You know, people, people at the public hearings we had were saying they didn't wanna see McDonald's and Burger Kings everywhere. And that's what drove that whole part of it. But, you know, is, the way, the way the situation is right now with COVID especially, is, I know interior dining in a lot of places is something that we really need to consider. And also is, you know, I don't, I don't see where Great Falls wants to control the entire parcel. It's not like we're gonna break it up into four or five different parcels and then have four or five different developers all looking to put some kind of drive-through in. So I don't think we have to have that worry right now. And if I read this correctly, James, is it would, a drive-through would only be over on School Street or the new roads that they build in the interior
Right.
of it, so it wouldn't be like on Sullivan Street or Wilson Street or anything like that.
Right.
So.
Hey, James, can they have a drive-up food store? Right downtown in there, can we have that so we can just drive up and get it? There too, downtown, is that, is that, get in there somehow?
If we can get a, if we can get a grocery store in.
We'll get a food store.
Yeah. So. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm looking for a motion to accept the proposed changes. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And just to point out that this is just to okay it to be put on the warrant, so if people really don't like it, they can always vote it down.
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'm at Planning at Berwick, Maine, or I'm Extension 124 at the Town Hall, I'd be happy to, you know, rephrase it or kind of explain what we're doing, so.
James, what about signage? We have, you know, I got upset about that banner the guy had to the left of the Town Hall there. We have any sign ordinance that's saying, you know, this is where it's gonna be, and this is where it's gonna look, anything like that?
We have some sign standards, I think we can touch them up. We have, for downtown, we have some design guidelines to show people what we want. But they were, Williams Greenery was really, they took it down within two days, I sent them an email and they took it down.
I know, yeah, that was good. That was good.
All right. If so, I'll close the public hearing. That was a long one.
Yeah, it was.
Is, we don't have any reports of committees, is, you don't have anything, do you, James?
Just, I'll go, Elise is our branding person, she's working on some town signage that will unify the signage downtown. And then we're looking for proposals for Great Falls Park. Our consultant on the park, Cornelius, he gave us a contact that I feel pretty good about. So we're gonna do some minor, looking to do some minor site work there to get that moving.
Do we have, how much money do we have for that, James?
Invision, Invision Berwick has a small, small pot of money that, I mean, we can do a, we're not looking to do anything major. Maybe I'll be back to you if it's any, anything that's substantial, but we're just trying to move some, remove some invasive species and.
Yeah, you sent me that stuff, I printed it all off to print.
I'm not sure what we're looking at for, for a quote, but we're not, I'm not thinking of it being a major, major project.
And here we go.
That's it.
So, no departments reports?
It's like October, you'll start seeing, each department's coming, each two at each meeting will be coming, probably all Zoom.
But we've got some creative stuff we're doing, and you'll get reports from each department head about where they are
and what their plans are for the coming year. So, it'll be fun.
All right, so next we have planning board appointment, Jerry Graybill, is, oh, there's Jerry there. Is, how you doing, Jerry?
I'm doing good.
Is, if you could just give us a little bit of your background and, you know, tell us why you wanna be on the planning board?
Okay, I came to the Berwick, South Berwick area back in 1986 when I was in the Navy. So I've been here since 1986, I live at 10 Pond Road in Berwick, and I've lived here at this house for 31 years. And I currently work for an engineering firm in Laconia.
Think about travel.
I don't go there every day, I've been doing it since 2008, so it's no problem.
Yeah. Does the board have any questions for Jerry?
Why do you wanna serve, Jerry?
Why do I wanna serve? I spent the last six months working with James on the project at 11 Pond Road because of the issues that I felt, because they're my neighbor, and I felt that it was wrong. So we wronged a lot of the rights on that, and I think with my background, I'd be able to help James and the planning board further on, you know, upcoming applications.
Good, that's great, we appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for volunteering.
Jerry was great to work with, and I think he's gonna be an incredible asset and help us out a lot.
Yeah, that's good, you're, that's good.
Is this for alternate seat or for a regular member?
Yeah, just gonna ask that.
Alternate.
Alternate.
An alternate seat, and would that bring them to their full complement now?
Yep.
Yeah? So.
And Frank's working on getting Paul ready to try to come back.
Well, that's one of the things I was gonna ask about Jerry, you know, is having two engineers on the planning board, it might be kind of confusing. As I know how engineers can be.
My background's in nuclear engineering, so. But I have, I have an electrical engineering degree as well, but I deal with mechanical and plumbing all the time.
Yeah.
Good, so.
If there are no further questions, I'll look for a motion.
Move.
If a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, is, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Welcome aboard, Jerry, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you, James.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have nothing undone, finished business, is town manager report.
Lisa Vargas in efforts to fine-tune how we do our finances. In each of our departments, we have capital reserve accounts. And historically, you've always approved these accounts for specific pieces of equipment. And what's happened is that some of the times, of the amount of money that we have appropriated for that, there's a little bit left over. Just to give you an idea, like in the police department, there's $4,800 left over from some of the smaller things that we had budgeted for a ways back, you know, 2015 and 16 and 14 and 15. What she would like to do is report that it's just one large capital, or small capital reserve account. There still will be listed in the police department what that money was appropriated for. But if we have a project where we need something like that, we can still use those reserve money for something else. Like with some, and we have some money aside for equipment to go on to the police cars when we purchase new ones, which is two one year and one another. That money, we have enough money in a pot right now for that to outfit the upcoming car that they're purchasing. And I just signed the lease agreements for. car that they're, they're purchasing and we, I just signed the lease agreements for. So we had enough money to outfit that without having to borrow as part of the lien process, so it's a little bit better for funding. But we also want to do that with Fire and Public Works and the Town Hall. There's just funding that, we could put it as a lump sum, but have it on record as things that we need to spend it on. So the reporting mechanism just shows Capital Improvement Fund for this department has X number of dollars for it. And just need your blessing to have her do that, she wants to do that, just to fine-tune how we report things, as she's just finished the audit. So she's been a real experience for her. So everybody's okay with that?
Is this just for the police, or is this for all the different departments?
All, all the departments. The Fire has money about $35,000, but some of it's for station repairs or station ventilation, spot chains. And every year we allocate funding for the SCBA containers. We replace those on a regular basis when they outlive their usefulness, things like that, radios, like we have, and sometimes they're replacing radios on a regular basis and that's where the money comes for these, but it's through this capital reserve account. Public Works has money left over, like we, stainless steel dump body, we went to purchase it, we allocated, I think, $35,000 for that. And when we went to purchase it, it was up over $40,000, we didn't have the money. So we decided to just purchase a steel body instead. And so we have a little bit of money left over for that, but that stays in capital reserve for equipment. And then we have another account, a capital reserve for infrastructure, which we buy our culverts and pave our roads with. And those are kept separate. And will stay that way. If that makes sense to you, when we, when we do the warrant articles, we'll, we'll still list at the bottom, like we have historically, what the purpose of what we're looking for, for the, for the funding that we're asking for. So it's, it's still gonna be very transparent what we're planning on purchasing, it's just one lump sum in the reporting. Anybody have any trouble with that?
Do you need an official vote on it, or?
I think so, the auditors are really sticky about that, so.
Okay. Yeah, Steve and I talked a little bit about this, he had given me some other examples of, you know, leftover funds and, you know, for the auditing end of it, you know, when you have 14 different things with a few dollars here and there, it gets, you know, more confusing, so. It's looking for a motion to allow the Town Manager and the accountant to, Finance Director to manage, manage the capital improvement accounts.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself as yes.
On, another note, if you remember back, when the assessors were here last, they, we denied a, the Prime Storage request for abatement out on Portland Street, I think it's where they are.
Yeah.
And they appealed to the York County Commissioners. That night, and our assessors were there to give their side, and then Prime Storage was able to do their side, and they granted them the abatement. But it was done very quickly, not a lot of questions were asked. One of the, one of the Commissioners and the city or county manager thought that it was done a little bit too quickly, they really need to go back and look at the finding of facts, they didn't really give a chance.
Which one is the Prime Storage?
Yep.
On Portland Street?
That, that, the, the one is in the fields, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Right. Just up from Goulet's?
560 Portland Street?
Close street from Dino's, H.B. Seifel?
No, no, the one down further towards South Burwick.
Those are the one that, the red buildings where they, right next to the Spin Analytical?
Yes, yes.
So what, what, what the Commissioners have done, and you, Board of Selectmen got a letter, came to me, from the County Manager, Greg Zinner, that they are going to revisit that and reevaluate that hearing on October 21st, 2020 at 4:30 PM. So they're gonna revisit it and hopefully they make the decision based on what our assessors' recommendations were.
Steve, both those places, Steve, have been sold in the last year or so?
Yeah.
Go and look and see what they sold for, that's a good.
Well, I think that's what they based it on.
Yeah, well, if I remember correctly, is, is we assessed it for less than they purchased it for.
I'm sure we did, yeah.
And, and they, and they contested, they contested, you know, what we assessed them for, even though it was less than they purchased it for.
Yeah.
Is, and they said that.
What was the purchase price, do you remember?
Two, 4.28 million.
4.2.
Million.
Million, yeah.
Yeah. Is, and, and, you know, their, their argument, if I remember correctly, was that, you know, part of that was, part of that was intangibles by buying the name and getting the employees or something like that was their argument. And as far as the employees, I didn't know that you could buy and sell people.
Yeah.
You know, I thought slavery was illegal, so, and to claim that, you know, that was part of the intangibles is beyond me, so. So at least, at least they're looking at that again, you know, I'm pleased with that.
We got our first draft of our audit today. I think going through it, Lisa Vargas is on vacation for the next three days, she's starting to go through it, but hopefully by, when she gets back next week, we will have a chance to sit down and go through it. I've already found a few things that I think are mistakes. So, and Lisa's been going through it for quite a while and finding mistakes and a lot of cutting and pasting and, so, but it is coming and hopefully have it by the middle of, at the second meeting of the month, we'll have a final copy and, and have the auditors come and present it. Wright Pierce is going to be here on Thursday, they're gonna meet with James, myself and Jody on properties to look at for aquifers. A geologist has put together a bunch of places he wants to look at and, so we're getting started on that, which I'm excited about that. One of the things that we've been having here in the Town Office and James, myself and Lisa Vargas have been bombarded with solar energy projects. And, and I think it's time, we maybe had a workshop after a short meeting some night to talk about the different types of proposals that are coming before us. Some of them are buying into the project itself, others are financially investing in it and getting benefits from it. And there's quite a few different scenarios that we keep getting hit with and I think James and I and Lisa will get our head around what, what the different ones are and then we'll hold a workshop so we can talk about it and you can give us direction, what you think we as a town might want to be interested in. I know Tom and I've talked about it, we, I think the first company was Revize, they came to see us after we got involved with the LED lights. And it just seemed like I'm getting emails and phone messages on a regular basis to talk to them, so I, I want to get our arms around it so we better understand it and what's beneficial to us. So that, that will be coming up probably in the next few months. We'll sit down, hopefully, we'll Zoom it together, I guess, if anything else, but otherwise, that's all I have. Paving, they're gonna do Little River Road next week, I thought they might get out there earlier, but, which they bought, we bought some time because the road crew's been out there ditching quite heavily and we're gonna have to remove some material and, and replace it because some of the gravel is, base is pretty bad. But I look forward to that being done in Logan Street and that will finish it for the year. And hopefully it doesn't get any colder. But that's all I have.
Any other questions for the Town Manager?
Oh, fire station. Fire station, we keep pushing the punch list check forward because, one, we haven't got an occupancy permit yet because some things weren't completed. And the punch lists that Tom and Chief Plant have created is, is quite lengthy and the architect has his own punch list. So they've got a few, we had a meeting today, there's a lot of little things that they have to fix. And also in the Sally Port, some things that they need to fix, so I, I don't see us doing a punch list probably for another week anyway. Once they get that fixed up and then we'll be moving, but it's looking, the station is beautiful and everybody's done a real nice job and we're anxious to see the landscaping get all done and the design, but they're almost done. But hopefully October will be the week we move in. But that's all I have. Any questions on that?
Is, I just want to add, you know, talking about the fire station is, is the Town Manager has got somebody to do an appraisal for the old fire station and we hope to have that in the beginning of October, you said?
Yeah.
So we'll have to, you know, discuss what we want to do with that and how we want to market that. You know, we've had several people already, you know, express interest in it, so.
We have to have an article in the January warrant. You don't have an article about disposing of town property, which surprised me a bit, but you probably never had to do it. But, so you'll have an article in the warrant in January to say, to give permission for you to dispose of town property and how you, and how you manage that, so. Then we can sell that, they'll be in by then.
All right. The Selectmen Communications, as I, Steve told you about the letter from the County Commissioners, and that will bring us to the accounts payable. We have a payroll warrant, number 17, from September 17th, 2020, for the amount of $84,153.33. We have a payroll warrant, number 18, for September 24th, 2020, the amount of $77,595.95. And then we have a count payable warrant, 19, for September 24th, 2020, the amount is $641,049.03. I'll make the motion to pay the bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself as yes. And that brings us to new business with our personnel policy for review and comments to be adopted on October 13th, 2020.
And Lisa Eustace, who has put this together and refined this numerous times and fine-tuned it and, I think we've got a really great document and we thank her for all the work she's done on this. You're on.
The.
You don't need to read it word for word.
That's good because it's 36 pages now.
Exactly.
In general, it's a combination of the personnel policy that we already had, plus a lot of stuff from Bitifid, Town of Bitifid, Gorham, Portland, other towns that had personnel policies on their websites. So we picked some of theirs, we adjusted some of the language, we expanded a lot of the language, that stuff we didn't have in the past. Our office gets a lot of questions on personnel issues, so my old copy had a lot of notations on it, so this has answers to all the notations that I had. So, and then we also sent it up to Legal for review, she double-checked all the language, made some corrections in my limited expanse of proper etiquette language. So she included all that, made corrections, and she thinks it's a solid document. So my question now is, asking everybody, I've sent it to the department heads to review it, see if there's anything else that should be included, anything that's weak, that isn't, there isn't enough clarity on. I've gotten a couple of comments so far, but minor things, easily to work in. So that's what I'm looking for, if the Selectmen would like to review it, see if they have any issues in any areas and let me know, or if they want to see something more included, or if they need anything to help with documentation.
Any questions for Lisa? I guess not.
Okay.
You stunned them.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, we'll go through it, you know, read through it, if you have any questions, you know how to get in touch with Lisa. It's quite an expanded thing from our last proposal, our last policy, you know, it was about four or five pages long, wasn't it?
And the other thing is, some of the sections that are in this are policies that the Board of Selectmen have already approved.
Right.
Like nepotism and snow days and things. And those are, are, are gonna be put in the appendix in the back and you'll see a reference. Sometimes there's some wording to explain it briefly and then it says appendix. The suggestion from the attorney was, then if the Selectmen want to change wording in any of those policies, they can, without changing the whole personnel policy all over again.
They just have to go into the appendix and change that one.
One piece or one word or, I mean, as time goes, who knows what will be included and, and changed, so.
We try, we tried to make sure, went through all the union contracts as well, Lisa's been part of that since I've been here, to make sure that they correspond, the things that are pertinent to personnel. Some of the union stuff, of course, is not in there, but some of the thought processes and, so we're as uniform as much as we can be.
Does this be online?
It will be, it can be.
Online? When it's done?
When it's done, it can be, yes.
Okay.
Once it's approved. Take your time, read it, if you don't have anything else to do and.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Welcome.
Let's see, we have no quick cane deeds or installments, no abatements, no second public comment because we have no public. Now, executive session, we do have an executive session listed, is, is, but, is that talking with the Town Manager and, or Assistant Clerk today, there are some other questions that we had to, you know, for these, the people to answer for us. So I, I really don't see where we need to go into the executive session at this time is we get the answers we need, you know, for, from the information, is we can take it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, we asked, we invited this person, they have the right to be here, and we didn't get a response. So I think it's important that our questions get answered prior to us discussing it amongst the board members.
Right.
And convince them if they want this poverty abatement, they need to come before the board and, and defend what they're asking for.
So we won't, we won't be having an executive session tonight. Any other business that anybody wants to bring up?
Yeah, not, not to extend this any further, but I think we really need to revisit the marijuana.
Agreed.
You know, it's something that I think it's, I know James said we've, we've reached a saturation or the limit, but I really think we need to focus on that and make sure that, you know, we don't wind up in another situation, much in the same way we have with, with Blackmore. You know, we've kind of ran into this with, you know, the apartments on Cemetery Road as well, kind of a cemetery issue. So let's, let's focus, I think, on this, I think it needs to be a topic of discussion, whether it be a workshop or whatever, I don't know, but, you know, I'm not against business, but I think that we don't have 13 Walgreens and 13.
Exactly.
Yes, it's, it becomes a point where I think that we have to look at the, the whole picture and what the future of Burwick as a whole is gonna look like. To your point, Tom, when, when everybody voted on legalization of marijuana, I think the thought processes were, hey, I want to grow my own weed and smoke in my home without having to worry about it. I, I don't think everybody was thinking major cultivation or industrial production of marijuana.
Right.
That was, and I could be wrong, but that would be my suspicion. So I think that, that let's at least discuss this and determine whether we need to.
I think when they first started this marijuana stuff, there was really no template in the thought process of what they were taking on. I think when they first started this marijuana stuff, there was really no template in the thought process of what they were taking on. And I think they, the, the office of, uh, Augusta has found that out and that's, I think that's why it's taken them the length of time it has, besides the COVID thing. Um, and I think we've been, uh, because of the COVID, we haven't had a meeting with the planning board and I, I think as soon as we can, I think it would be prudent before we get into the, uh, uh, or during the budget process and looking towards June, if we're gonna make some changes, we really need to jump on that and start talking about what we're looking at on this and the things and anything else we have, so we can get it on the June ballot.
Can you look back on, um, some of the states, whether it be Oregon or, uh, Colorado, see what they're doing?
Right.
For this same type of thing that you're talking about, Steve?
Yeah, I, I know the office of. Their office has heavily, uh, been involved with, uh, talking to people from Oregon and, and Colorado. Um, and that, even four years ago, Maine Town and City Managers had people from Colorado come in and speak about things that they found that they had missed and, and were making changes on, so they were, they were the guinea pig, I guess, and they, and they really learned along the way and I'm, and I think Maine has taken that information and, and done a better job for our.
So we're able to, as a town, so as time goes on, even though this was, could, could go there now or we did this, then we had, we can change it to do this now, right? We can, we're able to do it every time we relicense them? James, what about? So when we realize, when the license come up for renewal, can we talk to the applicant and say, well, yeah, I want, uh, take down your banner, can have more lights in the parking lot, whatever, that type of thing?
Yeah, there are some things that are within, I'll have to read the ordinance, um, but you can impose conditions. And how far, huh? In the future, yeah, yeah.
You can, you can deny.
An agenda item sometime in the near future.
A good point, Ed, we should do that.
All right.
And I, I, I tend to agree with what Ed said earlier that, um, you know, four years ago when people in town voted for it, is most people weren't thinking about commercial marijuana grows, they were talking, thinking about, you know, growing a few plants for themselves or, or something like that. And, uh, you know, it really took us by surprise, I think, and, uh, you know, they have been good neighbors. We, you know, we can't deny that, is that we have had no problems with them, you know, they pay their taxes, they, you know, follow the regulations, so, but I do agree that we need to sit down with the planning department and the planning board and, uh, you know, look at this again and, uh.
What, what's happened in Canada not too long ago was they had the same situation we have in different towns, there were, you know, a lot of places where they were growing it and selling it. But what happened was the big tobacco company came in, bought them all.
Yeah.
Whether it was Bob Ball or Campbell, somewhere one of those, bought all of them.
Yeah.
So that, that could happen.
Mark Cahay was involved in some of that.
Yeah, it's a good place for them.
As long as it's not Berwick, did I say that? Any other business non-agenda items? It's not, we have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
If everybody agrees, okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
See you in the morning, Patty.